Bob, congratulations.
Is it morning or afternoon or halfway? Good afternoon. How is everyone this evening? Thank you for coming to the meeting this morning. We have, I'd like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order for July 1st, 2016. Madam President, would you call the role? Why do I keep calling her President? You're going to be President. Madam Secretary, will you call the role, please?
Here. Here.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to recognize the outgoing board members and have any comments from board members for the 2015-16 school year. Any comments from...
Yes. Yes, I do have some, Madam President.
All right.
With your forbearance here.
Thank you.
And if, without objection from the board, I would ask that the secretary include a transcript of these comments in the minutes of the meeting. I'll provide an electronic copy later, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. I broke this into several topics, which we've all dealt with over a period of years here. Let's talk about finances first. The financial situation of Peoria Public Schools remains perilous due to the state's ongoing failure to meet its constitutional obligation to properly fund public education. Having passed Stop-Get School Funding yesterday is nothing to be proud of. The obsolete school aid formula still places urban districts like ours at a significant disadvantage. The continuing disgraceful performance of the legislature has placed the future of our state at great risk. No school can depend on anything they expect to receive from Springfield. Now, at the local level, we've discussed the city's unwillingness to soften the impact of TIF districts on Peoria Public Schools and other local taxing bodies. The city's continued refusal to return excess funds in accordance with TIF statutes needs to be addressed by the board in its ongoing discussions with City Hall. Additionally, I believe the city's planned imposition of approximately $300,000 of annual combined sewer outfall fees is in reality a tax. A fee is for services, but a tax raises revenue. One public body should not tax another public body. Private property owners will eventually bear such tax burden one way or the other. So much of our revenue is controlled by public bodies who are not focused on public education, and there appear to be few workable solutions. But deficit spending cannot continue without end. I'm happy to see we have a new CFO, Mike Willis, sitting here today for the first time, who has experienced this very difficult environment, and welcome to that. On the second topic of behavior, my experience as an elite volunteer was probably the most important factor in my decision to run for the board, and Sally and I worked with them for four years before I ran. Their presence in the school sends a powerful behavioral message, and the elite mindset and approach needs to become a part of every principal and teacher's skill set when dealing with misconduct. For the past four years, the elite approach has evolved. The school within the school at Lincoln and Harrison really works to the benefit of all students in the school building. Chronically disruptive kids stay in school and get an opportunity to succeed academically, and the rest of the students experience far fewer classroom disruptions. If it's actually paid, the state school aid retained by keeping those kids in school should offset the cost of providing school with school classrooms throughout the district. When students stay in school and do their job, everybody wins. You need to expand this model. Regards to academics, I really enjoyed the high school graduations because board members get to see and hear about students who have worked hard and achieved academic distinction. The board spends so much time dealing with children headed down the wrong track that high achievers tend to fall off of our radar screen. With our growing international baccalaureate program, advanced placement classes, and the Washington gifted middle school, Peoria Public Schools provides a strong academic offering. The superintendent's focus on academic rigor in every classroom is an extremely important goal. The addition of Dr. Ike and Tom Welch to the leadership team indicate the superintendent's commitment to academic excellence. In terms of accomplishments by the board, I'm proud of a number of things the board administration have accomplished over the past five years. Completing the renovation of Peoria High and the new athletic fields there is an investment that will pay dividends for generations. The Policy Committee tackled complex statutory changes in addressing student behavior. We significantly improved our purchasing process and developed an anti-nepotism policy that should serve as a model for other public bodies. In Dr. Karat, you have an excellent superintendent. I encourage the board to continue to work collaboratively with her in pursuing the strategic plan. Keep in mind the three wicked problems outlined in her first State of the Schools remarks. Our only hope for improvement is through community-wide collaboration and sharing of resources. The school district simply cannot do it alone. To our new board members, this will be a great and challenging experience. You'll spend the vast majority of your time on issues that have nothing to do with your reasons for pursuing the office. That's just the nature of the public education system. Your collective judgment, your judgment is critical to the success of Peoria Public Schools, and at times you will need to make decisions that are painful to the organization and unpopular with the public. Board members have a unique perspective by law that is not available to the public or news media. In many cases, you will not be at liberty to discuss why a controversial decision was made, but you have to stick with that confidentiality. This has been an amazing experience in education like none other in how our school system and community works. I would like to thank those who... I know I couldn't get through this. Who elected me in 2011 for the privilege of being a part of it. Give me a second here. To the many teachers, coaches, band directors, and other staff members who made my education in Peoria Public Schools possible. I'm terrible at this. For the record, the Richmond class of 1966 just celebrated our 50th reunion. Thanks to the members of the administration and the board members I worked with for the past five years. Thanks to Rick Redberg and his really energetic support of the Policy Committee. Thanks to Board Secretaries Joan Bastian and Daphne Dixon for their tireless efforts. Thanks too to... This is terrible. I'm just terrible at this. Thanks too to Sally for her love and support, and to my friends and associates who have been most encouraging and appreciative. Thank you. And I... Thanks. I appreciate that.
Comments from board members?
Mr. Claude, I just want to, again, thank you for your service to the city, to the children of Peoria, and thank you specifically for reaching out and helping me get started. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Claude, I very much appreciated the time working with you, your constant ability to provide background and depth on issues that are very difficult for new board members to pick up, and as a fellow advocate and supporter of charts and graphs and data, your skill with the spreadsheet will be very sadly missed, and we will do our best to try and fill it back in.
Amen to that.
So, thank you very much for your five years of service, stepping into a role in which, an election in which no one put their name up early on to start. It was a big role to fill, and I know it was a very volatile time within our district. So, thank you for all you've done to nudge us in the right direction, and we will do our best to carry the ship.
Thank you.
Mr. Claude, I think I'm going to miss you more than anybody. In coming on this board, my concern with children, and I knew there were so many other things I needed to be concerned about, basically finances. And it doesn't matter what anyone says when they say, "I'm running for this board, and I'm going to get on there and I'm going to do A, B, C, D, F, G." It isn't that easy. Learning about finances is not, school financing is not that easy.
No.
And I've worked with budgets, I've worked with a lot of things in all the corporations and the municipalities I've worked with. Never have I seen anything like school financing. But you have, with your charts and your graphs, you really have helped me to understand what I'm in for, and this isn't an easy job for anyone. So, anyone that thinks they can come on this board and just step up and do everything is truly mistaken. Your leadership, your wisdom, your knowledge, your history was important to me. So, as I sat in meetings and listened to you, I listened and made sure I understood what was going on. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate you wanting to give us that information, and you wanting to make sure we had the right direction to go to deal with certain things. I totally agree with you regarding the financing. I totally agree with you that our state legislatures and senators have not done what they needed to do to make sure that children in this state get an education to be able to spread their wings and soar. So, hopefully, even though you're leaving that seat, that you'll be here, so when we ask you about the charts and the graphs, that you'll still be here to help us get through that. And I just want you to know that I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kostick?
Mr. Claude, you know what? Aside from the fact that always comes to mind is the charts and graphs, but beyond that, beyond that, you will never know what an impact that you had on me as a board member. I am so appreciative of the knowledge that you imparted to me. There's so many times that as I listen to you explaining things, I finally said, "Oh, I get it now." And it meant so much to me. I appreciate the knowledge that you gave all of us with the information on those charts and research. I appreciate the experience. I appreciate the wisdom. And I appreciate you. It was a joy working with you on the Policy Committee. It just seemed that that just kind of really sealed that relationship that we had as board members. As a man and as a gentleman, Mr. Claude, I truly, truly, truly am very thankful that I had the opportunity to spend the last five years working with and besides you on this board. I'm truly going to miss you, but I have your telephone number. I can call you if I have a question on a graph or chart. But take care, Mr. Claude. And again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, last but not least.
Okay.
As my mother used to say, it's been a plum-pleasing pleasure.
That's a new one.
Well, you know, in any, and this depicts how we work with our children. And we may have started off rough ride, but you have to build a relationship with anyone. You've got to build a relationship. And after we build a relationship, you've helped take care of me, mentor me, taught me, you know, through this process, especially being the first time I was board president. And I appreciate that. But I, being able to call you anytime and ask a question, or you give me advice, I appreciate that. So, I really do appreciate you. But I'm not saying that you're going to be gone, because I do have you connected with the committee that I'd like to see you continue on, so I'll be seeing you.
We will complete our work.
We will complete our work. That's the one thing you do, is complete your work. So, again, I, you know, I've grown to love you and respect you, and I just, you know, look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Scott, would you like to have something to say?
Everything everyone...
Superintendent?
Everything everyone has said. We truly have a special love for Mr. Claude. He's truly a gentleman, great advice. They're correct in terms of binders and graphs and charts. I have a thick binder, everything I want to learn about, you know, the stadium, the book is in my office. Needs to take a look at it. But as you can tell from his presentation and his remarks, you know, today, this afternoon, this work is so passionate. It's not a, you know, it's not for good looks, or we used to tell the kids, or just saying I'm a board member or I'm a superintendent. I mean, he came in here to really make a difference, like all of the other board members and myself and everyone connected with Peoria Public Schools. So, I, you know, you can sense that passion, and I'm also very, very passionate about making a difference for all of our approximately 14,000 kids. Ms. Kostick, you're right. Mr. Claude, he's a true gentleman. He will provide ideas, additional food for thought. We've never really had an argument, a disagreement. I've always asked for his ideas. What about, you know, are you seeing any glitches, you know, any bugs, you know, those sorts of things? And he's a walking encyclopedia, and it's, actually, it's a family affair. I know Sally very well through Elite and different projects, and they're both very, very supportive. So, I really appreciate you, and you've, you have, you've agreed to sort of, if I'm a, if I want to run anything by you or to assist, and so I may very well do that. But you will be missed, and you're amazing, Mr. Claude.
Yeah.
And thank you for all of your support and love that you've shown me and guidance that you've given. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
You've inspired me for sure.
Anyone else that could have anything to say? With that, Mr. Claude, the Board of Education would like to give you a small gift in recognition of your service. Each one of us bring a different expertise, and you know, yours is very well...
Should I open it?
Sure, you can. You can open it now. No, it's not going to shut up. Here, let me help you.
There we go. Yeah, let's break the box.
There you go. It's already open, the top.
All right. There we go.
The other side.
Oh, well, it's upside down.
Upside down. All right.
That's very nice. Thank you for your five years of service.
Thank you. Now, with that, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn, signed I.
So moved.
Second. Would you please call the role?
Mr. Adler.
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Kostick. Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye, here. Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Okay. Six ayes, all she carried. Okay. And we have an election of chairman pro tem.
Take care. All right.
I would entertain a motion for an election of chairman pro tem.
Mrs. Ross, I move that we elect you, Mrs. Martha Ross, as the chairman pro tem.
Second.
Would you call the role on that? Thank you.
Mrs. Kostick. Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion through.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to recognize the elected board members and ask them to please come to the horseshoe so that we can recognize you and welcome you. You can sit here until we get the election of the, the election of the vice president. Okay, so, welcome, gentlemen. At this time, I believe Daphne has issued your, do I have it? The oath of office, which we would love for you to read. Thank you. Lots of paper. Sorry. Dr. Bob, would you like to start?
Of course, thank you. I, Dr. Bob Davison Aviles, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Peoria Public Schools in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you. Mr. Walther?
I, Dan Walther, solemnly swear firm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Peoria Public Schools in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by a majority decision of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the adoption of the board agreement on the focus of work of the board and the code of conduct. The proposed action is that the Board of Education adopt the 2016-17, the Peoria Public Schools Board Agreement on the Focus of the Work and the Board Code of Conduct. I'd like to entertain a motion and a second on that. So moved.
Second.
Call the... Okay. Ms. Jackson, second, and Mr. Adler.
Actually, Mrs. Jackson.
I motioned. You motioned and he said, "Okay." I heard. Okay, would you call the role, please?
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Dr. Davison Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion through.
Thank you. I will be passing that document around for everyone to sign. Thank you. We have it pinned already? Okay. And as that's going around and getting the signatures, I need a motion to elect a secretary of the board.
I would move that... Your name just went off.
Daphne Dixon.
The Daphne Dixon remain as the secretary to the board. My brain just stopped.
You need a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Would you please call the role?
Mrs. Kostick?
Ms. Kostick? I think she's delayed a little bit.
Dr. Davison Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Next on the agenda, an adoption of board policies.
Mrs. Ross, do we need to do another roll call now that we've inducted the new members?
I thought we did.
Oh.
Actually, there are two meetings today. We finished one.
Yeah, and then we did a roll call. Okay.
For the record, we should.
All right. Well, you do us the roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Kostic?
Here.
Dr. Davison Aviles?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here. Okay, thank you. And now the adoption of board policy. It's actually on my list.
Mrs. Ross, I move that we, uh, that we adopt the policies as the immediate pass of board so that they be the policies of the new board.
Second. Would you call the roll, please?
We have discussion briefly?
Uh, yes, we can have a discussion.
Regarding the board policies, I have not read them and have not been provided a copy and as such, would not be able to provide an informed vote on what those are. So.
So you'll be abstaining?
So I will vote no.
Okay, all right. Other comments or?
I have the same feeling. At this point, I'm not comfortable with supporting that motion. So I just wanted to say that before we vote.
Okay. Okay, then I call for the vote.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Dr. Davison Aviles?
No.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walters?
None.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, we have a round period.
Thank you. Okay, I will be passing out the establishment of time for our regular meetings. And that's next on our agenda. You take one of those. Time for the 2016-17, um, regular board meetings.
Mr. President, is that the schedule?
Yes. It is the schedule, the calendar that needs to be adopted at this time. So, once everyone receives a copy, I'd like to get a motion to, uh, take action on this. It's written on your.
Mrs. Ross, I move that we adopt the schedule as presented.
Second. Any discussion on that?
This is our.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry? Ms. Kostic?
Even though, even though I am not there to view the schedule, I am in agreement with what, you know, however it is set. So, you know, I will be voting for it.
It was actually approved at the January 25th meeting.
Right, it's the same schedule that was approved at the January 25th meeting. So, you've already, but the new board will, the new board has an opportunity to vote on it as well.
Got you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Dr. Davison Aviles?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walters?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Uh, next on the agenda is the election of officers. And the first officer is for president. Mrs. Ross, we have, this year, really done a lot of things as a board and as an administration. We've hired a outstanding superintendent and we're seeing that she is moving forth to put outstanding people in critical positions. I think that we're off to a very good start. And I know that Mrs. Ross and Dr. Karat have been regularly meeting with our stakeholders and putting some things together to make our district a strong district. With that in mind, I make the motion that we retain Mrs. Martha Ross as our board president.
Second.
Two seconds. Is there, is there any discussion? Are there other nominations from the floor?
I have a, uh, a discussion and this will be actually for both of the officers. And while, um, I have an informal relationship with everyone here, I've not had the opportunity to work with you as a professional, as a professional and as a seated board member. And taking to heart the comments that I made, that I heard Mr. Cloyd make and that I've heard other board members make about how important this job is. I will, until, or I will look forward to having a more in-depth personal relationship. But as at this point, I would be abstaining from those positions, voting for those positions.
Thank you.
My, if I may. The, well, Mrs. Ross and I have had some discussions at times and that always agreed. I would like to support this nomination, so.
Any other comments? Are there other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, then would you please call the roll?
For board president, Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Dr. Davison Aviles?
Abstained.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walters?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstained, motion carried.
Thank you. Let's see, I've got a little cheat sheet here.
Vice President.
At this point in time, um, as a new board president, I don't need to make any comments. I am working for the betterment of the children. And on the agenda, it says, new board president, make comments. So, I'm, I'm here for, for the same reasons. I've been here 15 years. I have a passion for children and older people. And so, the most of my time is spent trying to make the educational environment better for children and families and working with the whole family. So, I know we can't work with one without working with all of them. And so, I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate everyone's input and everyone's guidance because I can learn something, I'm always a student, I can learn something from everybody. Okay, so with that, for vice president, nominations are now in order for the vice president.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Mr. Dan Adler as for vice president.
Second. Been moved by Ms. Kostic and second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any nominations from the floor for vice president? Seeing none, is there any discussion? All right, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Dr. Davis, Davison Aviles?
Abstained.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walters?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstained, motion carried.
Thank you. Mr. Adler, would you please take the vice president's seat and change seats with Dr. Bob? Thank you. Just to add, and vice president, would you like to make a few remarks?
Uh, sure, just real briefly. I, I have really enjoyed my first year serving on the board. I'm very encouraged by the progress that our district has make, has made. I'm very satisfied with how well Dr. Karat has rallied our community around our cause and our students. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity very genuinely to give more. And so, I appreciate the board's confidence in, in serving as vice president and I hope to make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the appointment of an assistant secretary and chief financial officer and, uh, chief legal, chief legal officer for the 2016-17 school year. May I have a motion on that?
President Ross, I move that Tracy A. Jones be appointed as assistant secretary of the Board of Education, that A. Mick Willis be appointed chief financial officer, and that Richard Rettberg be appointed chief legal officer.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
You don't know any of these people.
I don't. And although we just met today, and again, nice meeting you once again. But, but for that reason, I'll abstain.
Thank you.
Similarly. Although I have some more working knowledge, I think at this point, I'd feel more comfortable.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Dr. Davison Aviles?
Abstained.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walters? Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, two abstains, motion carried.
Thank you. We are now at the place on the agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria School District 150. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to the goal, this goal rather. Reorganizing, recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech. We ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get our staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website of PSD150.org. We realize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts. So, we have installed a comment box over by the front door for you to install your, place your comments in and the board secretary will compile those and share with the board and its superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. First person who will speak is Mr. Terry Knapp.
Thank you and welcome to the two, two new board members who bring a lot of educational expertise to this group. Not that you don't all have that, but these people have actually served in classrooms and served in education and they bring expertise I think you need to listen to. I've been involved in this district, I'm 70 years old. Been involved in this district since kindergarten. The last six years have been the most contentious six years ever in this school district. The two board members who are leaving both talked about two issues. One, the closing of Woodruff High School and the other Charter Oak Grade School. These two things are permanent stains on this district. The people of the North Side were not polled nor were they given opportunities to have meetings on the closing of Woodruff High School. We said we didn't have enough students for four high schools. The mayor on the front page of the paper, January, I believe it was 10th of 2010, said that we didn't have enough kids for four high schools. And then, three weeks after the closing of Woodruff, we gave political people in the community a charter high school, which is dismally being run. Thirty-nine students graduating out of a class of 36 and no one even questions that in this city. I think that's deplorable. We need to really look at the things we did. I want to thank the Change 150 group who became involved, especially after the Charter Oak fiasco, and were responsible for getting four or five of you elected to this board. I know that the two people leaving the board said we shouldn't be beholden to the people who elect us. I, I take exception to that. You need to be responsible to the people who elect you, the taxpayers of this district who pay the bills. You have no money. When you sit here and talk about money, it is not your money. It is a taxpayer's money. The federal government, the state government, the city government are all somewhat foolish when they, when they talk about their money. It's not their money, it's taxpayer's money. You need to listen to taxpayers. In the last six years, no taxpayers were listened to. The Charter Oak thing, $140,000 in legal fees spent, you know, pounding little special ed kids into submission so you could get the result you wanted. Fire the principal, roll over the people of Charter Oak, and destroy that particular school. It was sad and you need to move on with education and, and get off of this thing and take the taxpayers and the children to heart really. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on, uh, next one we have, speaker is Mr. Jeff Atkins-Dutrow.
Good afternoon, Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, president of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. Like to thank current and outgoing board members for their service and of course, welcome our new members. We look forward to working with you as we also to work to ensure we have a quality system of checks and balances for Peoria Public Schools. Advocacy is something we do all the time. I'd like to thank the Illinois Federation of Teachers and union locals from across the state who continue to press hard for equitable school funding. That said, this is the first time I can remember our district actively lobbying legislators and advocating in Springfield for just funding. So, I'd like to thank you for your efforts as well. We have a first step, but as you know, we have a long way to go. We have funding for this coming year. We're in a position to make a sound strategic investment in the future of Peoria Public Schools as we continue to fight for the equitable funding we will ensure, on behalf of our students, comes to fruition. I'd like to give a special shout out and welcome from the Peoria Federation of Teachers to our student board members. They will be great advocates for our district.
Thank you. Any reports from board members or board committees or suggestions from board members?
I have a brief comment.
Okay.
First, I'm not going to abstain from anything right now.
Okay.
I beg your pardon. I'm not going to tell you that joke again because it fell flat the first time. I'm grateful for the opportunity that folks who have supported me, who are the same folks that support you all, but have seen something in what I can give, give back to the community. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve our students, their families, teachers and staff. As you know, some of you know, and I will keep saying this over and over and over again, I am related to the best darned kindergarten teacher on the planet, shan't to be my wife. And so, my experiences and these adventures has been colorful, to say the least, over the years. And I'm looking forward to, even though the the years, and I'm looking forward to, even though the work is challenging, I'm looking forward to probably the most important work anybody can do, and that is to educate kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Adler?
Yeah, I just want to thank, I'm grateful for the people that supported me to get to this position. Not once, but twice, actually. Took two runs at this, at this place, and I look forward to working with this school board, in particular, the superintendent. I think we have the opportunity to make Peoria Public Schools a great school district and a destination place, and not a school district that people wanted to leave. I truly believe that. I think we could make this a really special school district. But I think that's going to take the cooperation of not just our school board, but the city council, employee groups, churches, Chamber of Commerce, industry. I think we all have to work together to make this happen. But I think we can, and I'm excited to do this. I think one of the metaphors I've met is that we're like a big aircraft carrier. We're not going to turn this thing around overnight. Fortunately, we have a superintendent that thinks we're a speedboat and wants to get there tomorrow, so that's not all a bad thing. And so I'm just grateful to be here and look forward to working collaboratively with everybody. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome to the new board members. Are there any other comments or suggestions by board members?
President Ross, I would just like to again recognize all the tireless service that our new superintendent has given this year and wish her the greatest enjoyment on a well-deserved vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Mrs. Ross, can I just officially welcome Mr. Walters and Dr. Bob? I am genuinely saying to you, if there's anything you need, anything, any further clarity, you have my number, you have my cellphone number, email, let's, let's get this thing done. I think we're all in, on the same page in terms of realizing our vision for our kids. I love the idea of making our, our school district a destination place, a model, a place where we are providing high-quality programming for our kids. So I'm welcome, and I'm looking forward to working with both the two new, the two newbies on, on the Board, everybody, but I just wanted to say you're, you're part of the family also. So reach out to me, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, and I would just like to recognize, is Tracy Jones here? Okay, I can't see her because she's back. Well, Tracy, would you stand up? Okay, just so we put her name with the face, Tracy Jones is Dr. Karat's secretary, and now she's also the assistant secretary to the Board. So, and Joanie is not, Joanie, Daphne is not available. Sorry. I had Joanie for five years, so I'll get you for one year.
We are just.
Sorry. Daphne made a great effect on us, but that, but Tracy will fill in where, where she's not available. And with that, I'd like to pass out a copy of the Board of Education's, did I pass that to you? Board of Education anti-nepotism policy that was recently worked on by Ms. Kostic and Ms. Cloy, and he wanted to make sure, they wanted to make sure we all had a copy of this for our own files, okay? Thank you. No board reports? I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. We don't need, we don't need a vote, so enjoy wherever you're going. Everybody's going on vacation.
I'm staying around.
Thank you, all the audience. Oh, let me introduce, before we leave, two of the new student board members. We introduced them before, but they're with us now.
Please start, we should make your light.
July 18th, they will officially start. You want to stand up?
Alex will be here.
Alex.
And Alasia Baker.
Okay.
There was a great article in the paper, was that yesterday, I read it online, so I'm never, that was awesome. Guys, print it off and put it in your scrapbook, okay? Add it to your resume.
Thank you all for your time.